We had it.
We got a thumbs up. Okay.
Yeah, but we see here it's a meeting.
We good, right?
Process. No. There we go.
There it is. That's the official okay. Seeing that it is Monday, October 28th, and it is after seven o'clock, we will start with a rule call. We have a full board.
Go ahead. Alexander Graham, present.
David Gavigan.
Tom Bouchard.
Bob Goslin.
Jonathan Barnett.
Dave Clayson.
Okay, so we have a full board here. We're going to start with our first agenda item. It's a public hearing. We're going to have Alex read the public hearing notice.
The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 28th, 2024, at 7:01 PM at the Kingston Townhouse, Room 226 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Massachusetts, to present and discuss the following items for action at the 2024 special town meeting, which propose to, number one, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Kingston zoning bylaws as follows, in order to comply with GLC 40A Section 3A and the compliance guidelines of the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, EOHLC. Number one, by adding terms relevant to the new proposed MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, MCMOD, to Section 2 definitions. Number two, by modifying Section 3.1B Overlay Zoning Districts under Section 3 Zoning Districts to add reference to the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. Number three, by modifying Section 6 Overlay Districts, 6.1A, to add a new MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District. And four, to amend the Town of Kingston official zoning map to include the MCMOD Overlay District, or take any other action relative thereto. And point number two, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Kingston zoning bylaw, Section 9.7 Residential Development Scheduling, by deleting the section in its entirety, or take any other action relative thereto. Any person interested and desiring to comment on these items should appear at the time and place designated above. The complete text and any pertinent maps are on file and available for inspection at the Town Clerk's Office, Room 10226 Evergreen Street, Kingston, and online at...
Derry.
Derry? If you need the link, just come see us after. We'll give it to you.
Thank you, Alex. Val, you have a little PowerPoint.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to walk through this quickly.
Try to speak up a little because I know you're quiet.
Oh, yeah. Speak through this quickly because I know we have some games to watch.
Yes.
Okay.
Take your time.
So, there's a nationwide housing shortage in Massachusetts as well. The business community is talking about having difficulty attracting workforce, and we are losing workforce age demographics away from Massachusetts to other states. And this is just a chart showing the same thing, that the community is aging. We have less children here than we have in decades past. We have an aging demographic, more than we have in decades past. So, we're showing the same trends. And this is a little bit dated. This is a few months old, but a median house sold in Kingston was $625,000 not too long ago, and that went up year over year by roughly 10%, give or take, and we don't see that trend changing. The cost of housing is high. We have mostly single-family housing. We have a little bit of other types, so the idea of only having single-family housing at the range of $650,000, $695,000 is illustrating the difficulty there is to break into the housing market in Kingston. These are Kingston-specific numbers. And then I'll jump into what is an MBTA community. If folks haven't heard of it, it's a new law that was passed, and it's called 40A Section 3A. It's part of the zoning act. Basically, what it does is it requires all Massachusetts... Basically, what it does is it requires all Massachusetts communities that have a train station or, say, a bus station or happen to be next to one of those communities, they have to do this and adopt local zoning that would be 50 acres in size, would allow multifamily by right, meaning that it's a site plan review and not a special permit, that in Kingston, based on our population, we need to zone for 805 units of housing at a density of 15 units per acre. And we can't restrict it in terms of age or things like that. So, for us, the idea is that we have to be within a half mile of our commuter rail station, which is what makes us an MBTA community. And we've done a task force. We had members from all the elected and appointed boards that do with land use here in town. We worked on that with two grants that we got from the Mass Housing Partnership, which helped us with a lot of the technical work in terms of dealing with the mapping and figuring out how we could fit the minimum amount, the 805 that's required by the state, and not go past that in terms of our zoning district and where would we put it. And we started looking really closely at what do we have available to us to work with? And what do we have available to us that we want to work with? And we looked at having access to the T being off Exit 17 that we have an existing apartment complex that's 282 units, and can we count that? What can we do? We also have a lot of constraints around the T. We have leaching fields. We have a soil collection facility that's going on. We have a wastewater treatment plant, an elementary school, some conservation land, and a cat landfill. So, we were able to make the argument to the state that we need a waiver, and we're able to push about 60% of the zoning district outside that half-mile radius so that we could count the apartment complex and also look at working with the possible redevelopment of the mall complex, which is not doing very well. So, we got that radius grant or waiver, if you will. So, we're focusing on looking at the mall as one sub-district and part of the Marion and Gallon Drives as another sub-district. Sub-district A is the industrial park. We're looking at a three-stories, 16 units per acre, lower density. And we're using all previously developed, operating just fine, industrial sites there. Everything that we've chosen is within the mall's reuse overlay district. That's already been adopted, but it's actually a smaller footprint. And then we're looking at excluding the Macy's and excluding the Target, but including the apartments that have already been built. So, critically, instead of 805 zoned units, we're zoning for 805. We've already built 282 of those. And that would give us the opportunity to work with the new owners of the mall to look at redevelopment incentives. We know that housing is probably a component of making that a more a more successful redevelopment project. What we've seen in Hanover, what we see in Mashpee Commons, for example, we know that housing as a supporting nearby use to retail is going to help that thrive. And right now, we don't have enough of that, from what we understand, at this location. We've got the existing infrastructure at Exit 17. We have water. We have sewer. We have the roads. We have the traffic. We have the fire station all right there. So, it's not a large disturbance if something does get redeveloped there, and we know it will happen. And one of the things the state has said to everyone is, just to make sure you comply with our new zoning, we're going to add some sticks to that. And we've said that we're going to withdraw your access to funding. And so, in the last 10 years, Kingston's received over $8 million worth of grants to help it with dealing with either acquiring or protecting open space or, on the other hand, improving its wastewater treatment plant and its water service. So, we have $6 million that we got to deal with the infrastructure I just mentioned and three different land acquisition projects and a brownfields redevelopment study that was done. We know that we're going to need $9.5 million for the new well, pump station, and water tank. And we know that these assets are going to be something that we could apply for these competitive grants to help offset the cost to the town. We also know that on an ongoing basis, the state adds more and more programs to this list of programs that the town will not be eligible to apply for if we don't pass the zoning. We also know that Milton is being sued and is subject to fines and penalties and the costs of defending itself at the Supreme Judicial Court right now. And as far as where Milton stands on this, if what they're really testing out is does the Attorney General have the right to assert itself in this situation and sue the town and so forth? What's not at question at the Supreme Court is whether or not the MBTA zoning is enacted properly. That's not at question. Whatever the outcome of this case will be, it's not going to affect whether or not we need to comply. And lastly, we're heading into town meeting. We heard on Friday that our zoning has been pre-approved by the state. If we adopt it, we know that we will be eligible for these grants without question. And we're heading into fall town meeting on November 19th and hoping that people have all this information with them. It's a lot to take in. We have information on the Planning Department website. We have done some interviews with the town manager to make it more of a conversational approach. So, with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, this is a public hearing. So, what we're going to do is I'm going to open this up to the board. I have a bunch of comments, as you would probably imagine, because I never stop talking. But I'm going to open it up to the board members first. Questions for Val, comments, anything that you want to say. And then I'll go after that.
I'll mention that we had our workshop this afternoon. We had 15 or 20 people there. We walked through the same information. The mall showed up at the end. It was just an open house, so there wasn't any set agenda. And one of the things that we talked about was the likelihood that we're going to have this mall do a redevelopment with or without this zoning. And we know that housing is likely going to be a component of it, as I was talking about in my presentation there. And what's really going to help us in terms of working with them is access to funding and incentives to help them with their proposed approach to the project. So, as a planner, I know there are pros and cons to this, but I know that the town would be in a much better position not only to meet the needs of its community members in terms of applying for different grants and having lower taxes to try to deal with some of the issues that face the town, but it also puts it in a better position to try to negotiate with the potential redevelopment of the mall itself by having access to these funds that might help us with infrastructure and things like that.
That's great. Do we have questions, comments? Yes.
I just want, just for clarity for everyone, we wouldn't be limited grant access to just the 9.5 million that we need. It'd be future grants and other funds as well. So, that's not the be all and end all, just because people might put a cap on that. And we don't know what other programs might be available to us or not, depending on vote.
There's new programs being added every day for people who do comply, worth millions and millions of dollars. So, we don't know what we're turning away. We know what we've relied on in the last 10 years.
Good comment. Anybody else? All right, I'll go.
I think
Go ahead, Alex.
I think the chosen location for these zones that you have actually, in the long run, is very it's attractive to me because it utilizes a lot of space that unfortunately isn't doing very well right now. And I mean that with the mall and with the new owners coming in and actually making this more attractive and more accessible to people in the surrounding area, also involving the commuter rail there to connect Kingston to the larger Boston area. I think in the long run, it's good. I think it's good for us to kind of get ahead of this. You know, regardless of how I feel about it personally, I know we do need housing. We need more affordable housing for people. This seems like a way that we can do it, and I know Val's been working since this topic came up quite some time ago to make sure that it fits with the needs of the community, to make sure that the community is a part of it and that we have to go forward with this thing. We're doing it in a manner that's, you know, acceptable to all of us in a way that we choose.
Thank you, Alex. Anybody else?
For me, I mean, I'd rather see the housing there only because the land is already disturbed. We're not going to be cutting any trees down. But I wish that the housing that they built there was going to actually be affordable. And I know it's not going to be. It's going to be $3,000, $4,000 rents, which aren't nearly affordable. But I guess that's the world we live in today.
Val, can we still put the affordable 10% on this?
Yeah, 10% will apply.
So, 10% will apply. So, that's a good thing.
Yeah. And I should mention that this is a by right process that we're putting in place. So, it's not a special permit. What happens is if the zoning is put in place, there's still a very thorough review of traffic, water, sewer, open space, all the amenities, the building, the architecture. But it wouldn't be a special permit process. It would be a site plan review.
Thank you. Anybody else? Val, anything? No, Sean? When I first heard about this, my personality is, don't tell me what to do. It's just the way I think. It's been a problem for me in my life. But it's also been good at times. And when the state keeps coming into our towns and telling us what to do, it bothers me more than I can actually explain in words. The 40Bs, the 40As, now we got MBTA zoning. Now, we have another thing coming in February where you can do accessory housing by right. And then you can do two, three, or four on your property. That's coming in February. And so, the state, you know, because it's unaffordable and COVID happened, and people can keep their jobs and live in another state that doesn't tax them into oblivion, they're trying to dump this down into our communities and force us to put all this housing in. And I always thought that blackmail was illegal, but evidently it's not because they're threatening us with our own money. That money in the state level is our money. And they're trying to tell us, if you don't tell in your community what we say, then you don't get your money. And I think it's disgusting. That being said, and I can't say it any stronger than that, and I say it every time I talk about this, and I'm going to say it at a town meeting, that being said, we're in a predicament. We're a community that has recently and especially recently, we've taken advantage of so many state programs, grants, from the waterfront to planning, all kinds of different things. Val's been deeply involved in that. Tom Watt was involved in that before. We've taken advantage of a lot of this, and there's a lot more that we can't. But this will be cut off from us. And what we stand to lose because of the way Val has brilliantly planned this, if you look at the, could you bring up the sub-districts on that map? It was at the beginning. I know that. If we were in the same situation that a lot of communities are, where it's really going to ruin them, I would say, let's just vote against this and be done with it. But if you look at Sub-District A, that's all built out. That is SNL mailing and the awning, Dorchester awning, places like that. A-plus storage is in that, I believe. And those are all places that are built out. Now, yeah, could they end their business and then maybe build on there? Maybe. But we only have to build so many units. We already have some of those units counted. Is that right, Val?
Yeah, it's right.
All right. So, we're already partway there because of Val's work, and I can't forget Erin because she's awesome.
Val was the one that got them to shift that circle.
Yes. And I agree because we're outside that circle, but they're agreeing to it because it makes sense. We have a mall that's dying, which is not good for our community at all. They need housing to make this work. We need housing in order to get what we need for grants. It doesn't affect our community like a lot of other communities that surround us and across the whole southeast, southeastern part of our community here. So, I think what we, as much as it drives me crazy that I'm even saying this, it makes me emotional. It makes me so PO'd. But what we have to lose is way worse than giving this up. We have a situation that's going to actually help our town, I think, to save the mall, give them some housing with mixed use and fulfill that housing requirement that the state has blackmailed us with. And in the end, we have a mall that's going to be redone. We have people that finally have money that own it. We're in a really good situation, in my opinion. A lot of it is because of Val. And I think that there's so many people in this town that want to put the squash to this and say the heck with it. But we're in a financial situation right now. We have Eric, a selectman here right now. Am I right?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. He's nodding yes. He's saying yes. So, we have a lot of things on our plate. We have sewer. We have water. We have all these things, and we need grants for these things. Not that we're going to get grants for the sewer because we already passed it, but we need grants for the water. We have a $4 million well. We have a $5 million water tank. We have all these things we need that grants are available for. And who knows how many more grants we're going to need? And look what we've got in the last 10 years, $8.28 million? What happens if they go after our schools and stop those grants? We are absolutely screwed. We're already screwed with our schools now because we're underwater there. We have so many things to deal with. If this never even came along, we have so many things to deal with that it's overwhelming. If we don't pass this, as much as I hate it, if we don't pass this, we're going to put ourselves in a really bad situation, in my opinion. And I know that there's people that are vehemently against it, and I get that, and I feel that in my bones. But at the same time, because of our situation, we're in a unique situation to how the other, any other town is in. And I think we need to take advantage of it, and I think we need to pass this at town meeting. And I think it's really important that we do. And I'm going to speak at town meeting. I'm going to present the article. And I think that townspeople need to hear what we stand to lose and how little we really lose if we pass it. It doesn't change our town that much. We've already got part of the housing already built. And we don't have to build the whole mall and housing. We just need to satisfy the quota. And half the land is already built on it. I think we're in a really good position, and most towns aren't. That's my speech. I didn't practice it, but that's my speech.
Check if there's any public comment.
I'm going to. Anybody else now? Did I stir anybody up?
You did good. Did good.
All right. Anybody want to speak to this? Go up and just tell us who you are.
Eric Crone, 43, Longwood Circle. I'm also the chair of the Board of Selectmen. But I'm here talking as a parent, as a taxpayer, whatever. I don't disagree with what you said. Val and the team has done an amazing job. I think this is the least worst case that they could put together. I mean, she scraped things together to minimize how many units can be put on. But I think one of the things we have to do is take a step back, and everyone's talking about the grants. Totally get it. But we got to look at, in my opinion, we got to look at But we got to look at, in my opinion, we got to look at what the total income is going to be on 500 apartment units. I have no idea what the tax revenue is. I mean, if you look at the tax revenue, what they're paying on the 280 units, double that, that's what could be coming in. But then we got to look at the costs. So the costs, this is what can go haywire. We were talking about it earlier. It could, it's unknown. There's, I think, 30 to 40 in the 280 unit apartment from what Val said from the schools. So, and obviously that's spread across, I'm assuming, K through 12. So if you double that for another 500 units, that's 80 kids coming in. Between 15 and 20 grand a year. So let's go on the lower end, 15 grand, because we're getting some state and federal money. So let's go 15 grand. That's 1.2 million if my math is correct. 1.2 million that's going to cost to educate those kids in district. Problem is, it's the special education that is killing our schools now. So last year, we had 14 kids added to out-of-district placements. Those kids could be, those kids are kids who are being bused out to other school districts or other private schools that we can't educate in-house, like School for the Blind, things like that. So we pay for all of that busing. In some cases, we're paying medical bills. So you could have a kid move into town tomorrow and will cost us, you know, $300,000 for the year. So the problem is you get four of those, five of those, you're talking about a million. So now we're over a couple million dollars, most likely with special ed and the students. So I have no idea what we're getting for those taxes on those apartments or what other income. That's something I want to find out before our next meeting. If our grants were averaging 800,000 a year, are we going to be in the hole more than 800,000 a year by doing this and having kids going into the schools where we're already having issues? Keep in mind, Duxbury has the same population as us. Their entire school district, they had 14 kids placed in out-of-district. Last year, we had 14 added to what we already had in district. So we have a huge special education. I feel like Kingston is known for having good special education, and we're spending money so people are moving here. So you add up 500 units of housing that could be three-bedroom units. What's going to happen? So then we get back to the state. The state's made many, many, many promises. 50 years ago, when they said, we want all the schools to regionalize, we'll cover your transportation. They did for a year. And then ever since, it's been, well, a percentage. You'll get a percentage, 60%. So it's not 100%. Then same thing with special ed. So special ed, they take four times your base amount of what you're spending. And what you spend over that, they'll give you back a percentage. And that percentage changes year to year. That's why school committee can never get a budget until about February, after the governor's put forward what she thinks she wants to pay. But it's never 100%. So, you know, we're paying a lot of money, we don't get that money back. There's also been issues with, you know, the millionaire tax. The millionaire tax, we're supposed to go to schools and transportation. And then from what I understand, it's been used to balance the budget because, and not for education and transportation. So there's some broken promises there. We know that there's money for, depending on who wins the presidential election, there's going to be money to build new homes. Those are going to go out to, I think Vice President Harris wants to build 3 million homes. So I forget what that is. But divided by, you know, 52 in Massachusetts, we'll get some money to build some homes, however they divvy it up. And then the governor's going to use that, I think, to sweeten the deals, to get developers in here to develop all the land that we think no one will develop. I mean, those businesses along in Zone A, they may say, who, look at all this money that's being let out here like a carrot at that point to build and develop. So they might sell and develop as much as they can. My point is, we don't know what the total revenue is. I mean, maybe we do. I don't know if you guys know how much revenue we get from the apartments that are there now. But like I said, if you double that and then you subtract 2 million, that's just, and I'm guessing on that, 1.2 million is the straight education cost. Then there could be hundreds of thousands or even more than a million in terms of special ed costs above that. So that's the unknown. So if we're pulling in 3 million a year on taxes, which I doubt from an apartment building, I just don't know what that number is. So I feel like there's still a lot, too many unknowns, and we could end up being in the hole bigger than if we voted it down. And then you look at all the towns around us who have already voted it down. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's Norwell, Marshfield, Hanson, there's Tewksbury. Representative Linatra just said in a public forum that she was introducing legislation to repeal this because a lot of the communities like us are against it. When she was asked who wanted it, she said a lot of towns near the city. But a lot of towns near the city don't want it either. And just because a town passes it doesn't mean you want it. It means you're giving up to the bullying and the threats, like you said. I mean, you don't want this, but we're like, we're too afraid of not doing it. So that's really all I had to say. And that's just me, I'm just talking on my behalf, not the rest of the board. We did vote it down.
No, I know. My thing is, we need to save the mall. And the mall is very important to our revenue in town. And they need housing in order to make this work. They need mixed use. And with that housing is going to come taxable businesses and properties that are going to be expanded beyond what they are now there. Because most of them are just sitting there. It's not taxed like it was, let's put it that way.
Yeah, no question. We need more commercial tax base.
And I think that's a big, that's a big deal. Plus the fact that we already have part of this housing already built. I understand the unknown costs, I do get that. I also want to say that our state representative and our state senator both voted for this.
I know.
And so people should be asking them questions about this. I'm asking questions about it. And I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, say anything about them. But I think that a lot of the people who voted for this didn't even know what it was.
Agreed.
And they didn't read it, they didn't know it. And I'm not going to accuse those two women of that, but I do know they voted for it. And so I don't care how much they speak against it or they put legislatures in. They voted for these things that are ruining our community and ruining communities all around here that they represent. And I like these people. But guess what? Look at what you're voting for before you vote for it. Because, and then don't run around and act like you didn't vote for it. Because you did. And now it's costing us all this time and effort and anguish and all these problems because you went and voted for something you didn't even know what it was. And it really disgusts me. The special ed thing, you know, that's another whole subject we need to talk about. But that's something that our state rep and our state senator could introduce. Because the towns that are really good at special ed and take pride in it, like Duxbury, like Kingston, they pay the price. Because everybody moves here.
Yeah.
And can you blame people for moving here if they have a special, a child that needs special education? So you actually get, you get penalized for being good at something. And the towns that just poo-poo it, then no one goes there. And they don't have to pay the money. That's something that should be dealt with at a state level and that should be brought up sometime with our leadership. And maybe the Board of Selectmen could bring that with that leadership and get something introduced at a state level. Because it's really wrong that you do something really good like we do that everybody's proud of, but it's going to run the people out of town.
Right.
Because of the cost. Yeah, so the mall needs, they need the...
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Now I'm overwhelmed. Anybody want to speak to this? Anybody else want to speak to this? No? All right, well, I think on this one, we need to make a recommendation to town meeting from the planning board. Is that right, Val?
That's right, you need to take a position.
Whether we're going to support this or whether we're not going to support it. And, you know, I will say, I'm going to support it, be credentialed with. But I do think it's going to be better for us and the mall. So do we have a motion to either deny or support this article at town meeting or not?
Do you want to close the public hearing?
We should close the public hearing, thank you, Val.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moving second to close the public hearing. Well, wait, we have a hearing open for two articles, though.
You're right. So we could close this one and...
We'll just close this part of the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. So motion to close the hearing on the MBTA zoning. Is that what you said, David?
I thought so, yeah.
You made the motion, David?
Yeah, I did.
Because we have two articles on here, so...
So what, one and two? Is that what it is?
Just one.
I'm sorry.
Motion to close the MBTA zoning article.
Okay.
Yep. The motion was to close the public hearing aspect of the MBTA zoning.
I could second that part.
It's already been seconded. We want to make sure we knew what we were doing. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's good. Okay, now, do we have a motion to either support or not support, or whatever you guys want to do? And girls, no, just guys? Girls can't vote. Like way back in the day.
Yeah.
I knew that would get Eric, I knew that would get Eric. She's the best. Susan Farrell is the best.
She is the best.
Is Dave voting on this?
No.
No.
No. Shucks.
I'll make a motion begrudgingly to vote favorable action on this MBTA zoning article.
We have a second. Second. Moving second. Do we have further discussion on the MBTA zoning, here or not? All those in a favorable motion at town meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, it's 5-0. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on.
The next one is the vote to take away the residential development scheduling, aka phasing component of the zoning bylaw. And it hasn't been used in recent years. We've had everybody come in and ask for a waiver. It's also questionable whether it's enforceable by town council. The reason it came up at all was that it's another reason why we can't apply for grants through the Community One Stop Program. That this has been added to the criteria for towns. If they have it in their zoning bylaw, they're not eligible for at least planning grants.
What is our percentage of, on that phasing right now of a subdivision? 20%?
I think it's, I think we have a cap of around 28 units per year, something like that, that we would allow in town, townwide under this...
That was a percentage, no. Anyway. So phasing is basically someone does a development, they can build five houses this year, they're going to build, then they got to wait, build five more, and they got to wait. It never works because if you have a subdivision with five lots in it, and they're going to want to do one a year, it doesn't work. It never has worked. It's always been, everybody's always applied for relief and always got it. It just doesn't work for any developers, and it doesn't work for the town. It was meant to slow the growth. But who is going to develop land that they're not going to develop now and build on now? Bob would agree with that, wouldn't you? Yeah, because he does this. I mean, it just never worked. And no one ever stuck to it anyway. They always gave relief.
Well, it happened during the big boom, where they were trying to slow down permits.
Right. Trying to slow down permits back in the day. It just never worked. It doesn't work for business people, it didn't work for anybody. So, and now the state is threatening us again. Certain grants you can't get if you have phasing in your bylaw. Good Lord. Here we go again. I'm getting overwhelmed at the beginning.
Well, that should be taken out.
I think it should be taken out regardless. It's just that, you know...
You know, it's just like you said about the ADU situation. It's not going to be that long before, they're not going to need planning boards because the state's going to tell everybody what they can do and what they can't do.
Yep. I mean, yes, it just keeps coming faster and furer from the state level. And, yeah. Anyway, I think this is a good thing, get rid of the phasing, get it right out of our bylaw. Don't need it anyway. Regardless of what the state says, we don't need it. And we never used it, even though it was in the law, in our bylaw.
Well, I'll make a motion then.
That'd be great. Are we going to close the public hearing first?
Yeah.
Make a motion to close...
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the residential development scheduling.
That's good, yep.
Second.
All right, moving second to close the hearing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Go ahead, Bob.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to vote to amend the Kingston town bylaw, Kingston zoning bylaw, section 9.7, residential development scheduling, by deleting the section in its entirety.
I'll second that.
Okay, recommendation is for positive action at town meeting to eliminate residential development scheduling. If there are any further discussion, here or not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's 5-0. That hearing is now closed. I haven't forgotten you, Tom Bott. Just trying to get through a couple things. I'm going to do one more public hearing, then I'm going to let you do what you want to do. This will be fairly smooth and quick. Public hearing, 7:02. Do we have a notice for 22 Forge Road?
The Kingston Planning Board will hold a public hearing October 28, 2024, at 7:02 PM. The Kingston Townhouse, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Massachusetts, in room 200, on the petition of Frank Bowen for approval of a special permit per the Town of Kingston zoning bylaw, section 5.2, Table of Uses, and per section 7.8, accessory housing units to allow for an accessory dwelling unit at property owned by Frank H. and Susan M. Bowen, located at 22 Forge Road and as shown on the designated Kingston assessor's map, 15 Lot 76. A copy of the application and plans are available for inspection at the Town Clerk's Office, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, during regular hours. Any person interested and desiring to comment on these items should appear at the time and place designated above. The complete text and any pertinent maps are on file and available for inspection at the Town Clerk's Office, room 102, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston.
Thank you, Alex. I'm going to go to Val first, and then I'll go to Mr. Grady if we need to.
So this is a request for a detached accessory dwelling unit, which is our first under our new zoning bylaw that was adopted at town meeting and approved by the Attorney General. And the ADU is located to the rear and set back on the property from, the view from the street. And it complies with every aspect of the zoning bylaw in terms of the architectures in keeping with the existing dwelling. It has the access to water, separate septic system. And it has all the proper setbacks and adequate facilities. And we don't see any detriment to the neighborhood. So we're recommending approval.
Paul Armstrong did the math, because it works. Mrs. Grady might get paid by the word, so I thought I'd let him speak.
I have nothing else to add to that, actually.
I mean, I, it's, these accessory housing dwellings, dwellings, units are always, I always brag about them because I think they're wonderful. They keep people together, keep families together. They keep the money in the family instead of spending money on facilities someplace down the road. They can be rented if someone passes away, which helps whoever remains. It's just, it's just a win-win. It's been a... It's been a win-win. So, we've changed the laws to make them easier for people instead of more difficult. And we're always pretty proud of these things. They've worked out great. That's my speech. Anybody have questions with Val on this?
I'll mention that David Gleason is seated on this decision, and Jonathan Barnett is not.
Okay. Jonathan Barnett's gonna abstain from the vote. We need four out of five votes on this. So, Mr. Gleason will be voting for the second time or first time?
I believe it's the first.
Oh, hey, this is a big day. Well, I'll have to go out afterwards.
Confetti.
Call run.
So, um, do you want to add anything, sir?
Uh, no. Like you said, I mean, we were doing these in Nantucket 20 years ago, and always amazed me that they had it in their bylaws at the time, and it took a long time to get up here, so I'm glad to see it.
Yeah, I mean, the detached makes it easier in many, many senses, many cases, rather, and it separates the living quarters a little more. Yeah.
True. Yeah, it lays out nicely. I think it's gonna look nice when it's done.
Quick question. Yeah. Is this a new septic system?
Yes. It wasn't practical to connect to their existing system.
Well, that was my question. Where is the existing?
It's in the front left, so we would've had to get around the house and around the pool. And there was just no easy way to get there.
Oh, I see it. Okay, so it's those pits.
Right. So, it even had the capacity, but it just, we just couldn't get there.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
I just remember we had one of these, a detached one, a couple of years ago. Well, I think it was at the home zone. We had to turn it down a few years ago.
Yeah.
Do you remember? Yeah.
And then we had one that went to zoning and Department of Appeals before it came to us or something. And we passed it. And then, then we got built.
Yeah.
That was Roger Sola. Right, there you go. Yeah, so, anyway. All right, well, do we have a motion? Well, we have a hearing, so we have to decide. Do we have anything further to discuss? And if not, we can have a motion to close the public hearing.
Nobody reached out from the neighborhood protesting this or anything like that?
Oh, is there anybody here that would like to speak against us? All I see is people for it, and some guy that doesn't care.
The immediate abutters came in and looked at the plans and were satisfied.
Oh, okay. So, the immediate abutters were satisfied with the plan?
Yes.
There's nobody here to oppose it anyway, so public's been satisfied now. We can have a motion to close the public hearing. So, moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Moved by Bob, seconded by David. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And David's in on that vote. So, Jonathan stands. We got that before the hearing. Is that right, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, watch that on the second vote. So, do we have a vote to approve as presented?
So, yes, Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, say, "So moved." How about "So moved"? "So moved." There you go.
I'll second. You can...
Seconded.
It's been seconded. Okay. Been seconded and seconded.
Dave moved it in favor.
It's moved by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Alex Alexander Graham. Okay. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Abstentions. Jonathan Barnett?
He's building.
We had that cleared up before the meeting. Good. All right. That's perfect. So, we have our hearings out of the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for not sharing.
Have a wonderful night.
All right, Mr. Bott. I'm gonna have you go next. Mr. Bott asked me for a couple minutes for a good purpose, so if you want to go up to the mic, give us your name, why you're here, and it would be wonderful.
What I'm saying, with Mr. Gleason here, if you went back to Billy, it would eliminate some confusion. I had watched Dave talk about it a couple times.
Yeah. There was another Gleason here before. That's right.
He was very familiar with it.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Tom Bott. I was the town planner here for a number of years, and I'm here to talk and thank you for the opportunity to talk about Kingston's Paul Bazler tonight. Said, "My name is Tom Bott. For 20 years, I was the town planner here in Kingston, Mass, and not nearly as good at my job as your current planner and my friend Val is." Since, starting as a laborer, I speak the truth. No other way to get around it. Grady can verify that. So, since, starting as a laborer in the Highway Barn in 1995, a bit more than three years before me, Paul worked his way through the ranks. And on November 20, 2001, Paul became the Highway Super, later the Superintendent of Streets, Trees, and Parks. And during that time, Paul served on many committees, starting with the Cable Advisory Committee in 1995. And I'm talking about this today because Paul's retiring, and November 1 is his last day, as some of you may know. So, he started in 1995. That's 7,250 workdays, and Lord knows how many nights, from many committee meetings and many snowstorms, laddled to work his day job well into the night. He served under 11 town administrators. He's been on the South Shore Recycling Committee for 24 years. He became the tree warden 23 years ago after a town meeting convinced Freddie Navas Sr. to retire as the long-serving tree warden. He's been the Old Colony Planning Board Council rep for 20 years after Gene Creedon retired. He's been the Old Colony Joint Transportation Member for 17 years, Capital Planning Committee for 13 years, Transfer Station Task Force for four years, the Memorial Day Committee. He worked with Phil Burnham. You get a medal for that. He was the guy who was typically cooking burgers for the people who were in the parade, at the end of the parade. He was on the Landfill Reuse Committee, the Library Needs Assessment Committee, the Permanent Building Committee, and many others. And while most of Kingston slept, he was up all night during snowstorms like a watchful father, concerned about the safety of his people, those driving the trucks, and those who woke up to an ice-free blacktop. Those nights are just part of his job. There's no additional compensation for the night shift. I remember once he got a complaint from a Kingston resident who, after a storm, drove into Pembroke and said, "If he knew the roads were in such poor shape in Pembroke, he never would've crossed the town line." So, show of hands, how many of us here have an all-wheel-drive or a four-wheel-drive vehicle? Many of us. When Paul bought a new truck a couple, well, a decade or so ago, he bought a two-wheel-drive truck. He said, "If I need a four-wheel-drive truck, I'm not doing my job." As I mentioned earlier, I have a long history with the town, but not as long as Paul's. He was raised in Rocky Nook. The Bazlers, they didn't summer here like some folks did. They were here for the duration. And my time goes back to the town, not quite to the time when Tommy was an all-star basketball player at Silver Lake with a kid named Alavato. But it goes back to a period when the guard was changing, and those serving in the community either retired or passed away. Back in the day, the near-impossible standard to meet for Highway Superintendent was set by Carl Atwood, who started documenting street information on computer paper back when the days when paper read green and beige stripes across almost these giant daisy-wheel printers. And we still use that document today. You can see the faint lines in the photocopies of that document from years ago. You can, people were likely concerned about what they were gonna do without Carl and the vast institutional knowledge that he had. Paul Bazler is the Carl Atwood of his generation. Paul spent a few years away from town, the town he loves, and the Navy as a Seabee, like Bob Gosden and our former planning board member, Mike Ruprecht. It's the branch of the Navy that does engineering and construction on and off the battlefield. He was stationed for a while in Hawaii, and he did such a great job, they sent him to the South Pole. So, it's no wonder that Paul hates the cold and the snow, even though that's a big part of his job. He learned many skills that would serve him and his country and his community, skills he continued to the home. The Seabees motto is, "We build, we fight." Paul fought for his community through many budgets, capital planning meetings, and town meetings. A slogan sometimes attributed to the Seabees is, "We do the difficult immediately. The impossible takes a little longer." While Paul has many accomplishments, I know one of his proudest is the Transfer Station. And while there are a lot of people and engineers involved, the idea for the design were largely Paul's, who had spent so many years overseeing its operation and welcoming us to new neighbors, a wastewater treatment plant, a dog park, a turbine for a minute. So, when a woman reported that her loss, she lost her engagement ring in the trash, who better than Paul to dive into the hopper and open and sort through bags of rubbish, garbage, trash, refuse, et cetera, until he found the ring? Paul tells me he was glad it was in the cooler months, so he didn't encounter too many maggots or way, way too many above-room-temperature disposal diapers. I will tell you, the charm and charisma will only take you so far, so Paul had to be really good at his job. He's my friend. And while, if I do my job, in my job, if I don't get something done, the effect could not be noticed for maybe 10 years. That's not the case for Paul, who had many, many people who might point out to him that the thing that was broke this morning wasn't fixed by lunch. But Paul points out he didn't do this job alone. He had help from a crew, contracts, and volunteers. One of those volunteers was a senior citizen volunteer, an indentured servant under the Senior Tax Abatement Program named Ruth Ann Cassidy. She summered in Rocky Nook since she was a child. Ruth Ann worked in the planning office, and she worked in the Highway Barn. She was the secretary for the Permanent Building Committee that Bob was on, Bob Gosden was on. In her 16th year of volunteering, we had a sweet 16 party for her, and she was mad, certainly not at me, likely at Paul. Paul was Ruth Ann's yard guy, handyman, and helped Ruth Ann out with all sorts of chores over the decades together in Rocky Nook. And as Ruth Ann was slipping away from us, Paul became her onsite nursemaid when she was experiencing sundown syndrome, and spent the nights, many nights, at her cottage or her home in Brockton to help ease her mind and comfort her. When she couldn't live independently, he would visit her, whether it was in Wingate, or in Brockton, or in Wilmington, Wilmington, Mass. I will tell you that heroes don't wear capes, and angels don't need wings. Public service is a choice many of us make, and not everyone's cut out for it. It's especially hard to work in the community that you live in, but that was Paul's choice, to be the face of streets, trees, and parks, and much more in the town that he loves every day and many, many nights. There's a saying that cemeteries are filled with indispensable people. Paul would know that because for many years, he was a trustee at the Evergreen Cemetery across the way. It'd be great to have the gift that is Paul Bazler in your town hall for longer, in the Highway Barn and on the streets and in the parks for longer, but even for a highly skilled man who loves this town, that's not quite possible. So, I hope you'll join me in thanking my friend, my Carly, the Carl Atwood of his generation, and thank him for all he's done for Kingston and for the many people who benefited from his benevolence. Thank you, Mr. Bouchard, and members of the board, for your time tonight with the busy agenda. And who knows? Maybe, maybe, November 20, the town should declare Paul Bazler Day to commemorate who we need became the super, who we know and love on the 23rd year of his anniversary of his leadership. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Well said, Mr. Bott.
Beautiful tribute.
Well, Paul...
Paul is the best.
He deserved that.
He did.
Yes. Thank you, Tom.
That was beautiful.
He deserves it.
He's a man, Paul.
Thank you, Paul Bazler.
Got me right in the feels.
You might want to watch how you pick your friends, Mr. Bazler. All right. So, that was good. Kept me from talking for a few minutes.
Are they having any time for him? Are they having something for him here?
They had some at the Tower Bond Farm, and I don't know that anything else is planned at this moment. So, now we have Russell Pond Road, and it's a release all lots.
Yep. This is just a housekeeping item. The previous planner, Mr. Downey, did a partial lot release, and we've come to realize that none of the lots were released. It's an old subdivision where the road was properly constructed, the homes were all built, but there was no release that covenant ever recorded. So, we want to do that, a full lot release, like we did with Ocean State, Ocean...
Ocean Hill.
Ocean Hill Estates.
Not that long ago, so that anybody that's going to convey title out won't have to come to us later and ask for this before they can close on their property.
I'm surprised it hasn't happened at this point. Those houses have been sold.
No one's ever motioned anything about it.
Right. Now that, now that it's come up, let's, let's clean house before it comes up again.
So, this is just a little house cleaning here, item, something that should've been done a long time ago. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, what are we doing? Releasing all the lots at Russell Pond Road?
Russell Mills, Russell, Russell's Pond Road?
It's Russell Pond Road, yes.
Russell Pond Road.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to release all lots, clean this up once and for all. No further discussion needed, Val?
Correct.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's five zero.
While we're on the subject, if I might make a comment?
Yes.
The question came up about this being an accepted road, Val, a few weeks back.
Uh huh.
I happen, actually, it was today. I took a ride through there because I was going down into the Pond Road. And I don't know who else would've done it except for the town, but there's been a lot of work...
No, the homeowners did it in order to be plowed. Mm-hmm. Those are repairs that were needed in order to be plowed.
Really?
Yep.
Wow. Shocking.
It's awesome. Awesome.
Well, it was done well. I just assumed Paul did it.
Nope.
Where was it?
Russell Pond Road. Right across from Sylvia Pond Road.
Okay, that's different.
Yeah. Well, it's because they crack them down on the private roads. If they're not suitable to be plowed, they're not gonna be plowed unless they...
Oh, I heard that, but I'm just saying it's, it's different that the people are willing to...
Oh, I know.
Do it.
Well, they're weighing the cost, I guess. Okay. Captain Jones Estates, we need to release escrow inspection funds and bond. We know there's still some discussions going on in there. We had a discussion last time about this, where the people, the homeowners were complaining about them spending money out of the fund. Now, what we understand, even though this is none of our business, we do understand that those funds were used for maintenance, which is what the money's for. So, we're gonna stay out of that, that covenant, and we think that they've finished everything we've asked them to do, and I'll, I'll ask Val to comment on that.
Yeah, we've, we've got the aspels. We've already accepted. We've, we've got everything in the ground through our peer review consultant was done according to spec, and then the feathering is also finished. So, at this point, they're asking us to release the bond and the inspection escrow.
I have no problem with it. I think that we've gone all the way with this one, and it has been easy. It has been easy for Val, or any of us for that matter, but it took a lot of work to get to this point, and I think we need to release the inspection money and the bond, and the covenant is a private matter that they can deal with. The homeowners could deal with it.
Well, I took a ride through, and I was happy to see that he, as far as the Lumen seed he goes, he's satisfied all the neighbors. He did all in front of their houses.
That's all right.
I mean, that long stretch going in off of 106, and you didn't do anything, but it's, there's nothing there.
Nothing.
But the berm. So, I mean, I have no problem with it.
Are you talking about if you're coming from 106, the long stretch on the right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and I looked at that, and I'm thinking, well, the mulch... Yeah, you know, and I looked at that, and I'm thinking, well, the mulch comes down, and it kind of holds the mulch back anyway, going over, so I think it's perfectly fine the way it is. Yeah. Because it's got a little, little, a little slope to it, and so that, that little burn holds that mulch back in, I think it's fine. I noticed that as well. So does anybody want to make a motion? Can we do this in one motion, Val? All right, so the motion would be to release any remaining escrow inspection funds and release the bond. So moved. There it is, there's the motion by Jonathan Barnett. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded for Captain Jones Estates, release escrow inspection funds and the bond. Any further discussion? Here and none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? It's five, zero, zero. All right, so we have a set of minutes. I know they're here. This arm. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Seconded. This is so new, we couldn't forget it. I thought they might've been 2023. Yeah, yeah, this is, we're really.
We've been doing good on this today.
We're keeping up with this stuff. This is like never happened.
Aaron's on it.
On it like a honey. Chilling with Matt Dillon. All right, here we go. Minutes of Oct. 7. Somebody want to make a motion, Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah, and seconded.
Alex seconded it. Okay, I'm a little behind, but all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We had a full board, and we have a five to zero. That looks like it's it.
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Val, how's speed and boats looking up there? Is everything looking better there?
Yep, they just started bringing in the boats again, but the trees have held up fine.
They did, okay, good.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay, I've been by, I should probably get right up there. Also, do we have a send a letter to Sullivan from the cars parking along? I know that.
I don't do that work, that's the building commissioner.
I know, but I know you were gonna talk to Benny Laps.
Yeah, we, we had asked him to write a letter or something.
We have to bring these people in because it seems like every six months we're gonna send them another letter or something.
I know he met with them, and I know that the town administrator has talked with them, and I know that Paul Armstrong has spoken with them. I don't know if a letter's been written.
But I, I do know that they did take action after our meeting, and they, Jason talked to them in person.
Right.
Cars are back on the lawn, so isn't it?
Yes, they are.
Yep. Is this an ongoing battle we're gonna fight with these people? He's gonna wear us down.
Not, it's not under the purview of, of the planner.
It's under the purview of the zoning enforcement.
But it's in our.
We have a new person coming in, I'll have them get right on it.
It's in our special permit, so, you know, it was one of the conditions.
You're right, but then that gets enforced by zoning enforcement officer.
Do we, do we hire someone?
We interviewed today, we have another couple of interviews tomorrow, and then I think the second interview, they're hoping to do either the end of this week, early part of next week.
I still feel, on another subject, the golf cart place, they're not supposed to be parked all along the building. And I, I remember like it was yesterday that we specifically said no, but they keep doing it.
I think when Jason wasn't there, they were not currently parked beside the buildings.
I've never seen them not parked. Oh, they're there all the time. It looks awful.
All the time.
It looks awful.
Loaded up.
That's, again, that's enforced by the zoning enforcement officer.
Right, so do we, is that plan easy to reach, easy to find?
The plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they have the ZBA special permit and, or, and our special permit.
Yeah, we did the site plan.
Site plan.
So, yeah, if you could pull it out, Aaron, next time you're in, I'd like to look at it, then I can talk to Paul about it. I want to see what we actually, we approved, because it certainly wasn't that, it was in the conditions.
Right.
It looks so awful.
Yeah, I want to roll the board in there for sure.
I mean, you know, I know it's not our purview, but at the same time, if no one enforces it, it's just like a joke every time we have one of these meetings.
I just feel uncomfortable when we're putting one department head.
Oh, no, I'm not trying to do that.
I sometimes feel that I am being put in a position of commenting on whether or not another department is doing its job, and I don't want to be put in that position.
No, I get it. No, I get it. Nobody else is, nobody else is, unless somebody from the public knows what was approved, nobody else is gonna bring it up but us.
You can bring it up, but asking me if something's been done or followed through on is like asking me to follow up on whether the fire chief is doing his job.
I get what you're saying.
And I don't feel comfortable with those questions.
Should I just bring this right to, right to them, then? Should I call them?
You can bring it up to the board, and then the board can decide what it wants to do, but I'm not gonna be able to respond to you and say that X, Y, and Z happened in another department.
Yep.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody, anything else? I mean, I, I do get it, because I know that it's frustrating, because you make these things, and you go out of your way to make sure it's on the plan, and then nothing happens. Did you notice over at Royson Drive that with all the hassle with that, the police car outfitter they left? They did? Yeah.
I didn't know that. I know that they.
I was at Signorama the other day, and I said to the girl, and I says, what happened to them? Oh, they moved to Bridgewater or something.
They've been gone for a while.
I know they've been having a lot of issues with the wetlands permit that they have as well.
But I just thought that was interesting. After all that. Yeah. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I recorded all the games.